We'll do our pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Friedman. Councilmember Dominguez.
President.
Mayor Potem Rouse. Councilmember Hart. Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Maria.
Here. Well, it's a big day for us. Our first ceremonial item is saying thank you and goodbye to Councilmember Greg Hart, who's been elected to the County Board of Supervisors. And first on our agenda is to have comments from you, Mr. Hart, and then we get to go after you and correct you. No, I'm kidding.[69.53][69.53](Laughter). So, go ahead, please. We're all ears.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. It is really a pleasure and an honor to say a couple of short words. I'm not one for much for ceremony and things like this, but it is a moment to kind of reflect on more than 30 years of public service, 21 years either as a planning commissioner or a city council member to Santa Barbara. I am very fortunate to have had the opportunity to serve my community this time. You know, grew up in Santa Barbara and have so many connections with so many people in so many ways, including, you know, my parents that I've talked about before, being public servants. I'm very proud of that, and I am particularly pleased to have worked with such incredible people here at the City of Santa Barbara, from the top leadership, from Mr. Casey, Mr. Colon, through all of the department heads who work extremely hard with great passion and commitment to this community, all of the managers and staff that I've worked with, thousands of people, folks who are retired from city service, really care deeply about this community and do incredibly hard, super capable work. And, you know, it's, we, a lot of times, being up on the council, we get a lot of credit. We also get a lot of the blame, too. But the true fact is that the work is done by the staff people in the City of Santa Barbara, and the extremely high standards that the staff people do, that meet on a daily basis, reflects incredibly well on the council and really reverberates through the community. People are very invested in our town. They have very strong opinions about lots of things, and it's important to have people who are steering the ship to make sure that we don't hit the rocky shoals. And in my small way to have contributed to that, it just, I'm very grateful for this opportunity. It's really a once-in-a-lifetime thing, and I'm very honored to have served with these incredible people who have taken a lot of time out of their personal lives at the grocery stores, on Sundays when time off is supposed to be happening. These folks are working for all of us together to make our community better. So, I'm excited about the new opportunity. I obviously am going to bring my experience on the council to my new responsibility on the Board of Supervisors, and making that connection between the local government cities in the county and the county is really at the top of my list. And I've heard that over and over again today from folks who hope that can happen, and I want to do my best to make sure that can happen. So, again, that's enough for me. Thank you for this opportunity, voters of Santa Barbara, to have elected me four times to serve on the council. Thank you to my family, who've been incredibly patient with me, spending a lot of time away. My girlfriend, Letitia Haynes, has been incredibly impatient, listening to me vent about all of these things on our early morning walks, and I'm just really honored and grateful to have this opportunity to serve you. Thank you.[254.31][254.31](Applause).
Well... We do have a list of your accomplishments, Councilmember Hart, so you're not getting off that easy, even though we did our standing ovation. So, you helped pass Measure B. Was that 1999 or 2000?
A long time ago.
The Clean Creeks Initiative, which is really helping secure the water quality of our creeks and beaches. You helped with the public acquisition of the Douglas Family Preserve, so all the dog people can thank you for that. It's a premier off-leash dog park. 100 percent renewable energy by 2030. It's going to be tough. Maybe you can help us with that at the county level? And while I'm on that subject, we need help with our homelessness problem. We're going to, we're going to look to you as...[320.44][320.44](Laughter).
Down this list of things?
Yes, sir.[325.12][325.12](Laughter). And also helping with the passage of Measure C. Anyway, here it all, you served on Beacon, that's regional. Here's the list, a beautiful proclamation for Councilmember Hart. And I also have, because I don't think he drinks, sugar.[342.28][342.28](Laughter). There you go. And we're still on a sugar rush from the cookies from the 130 party, so please don't open it up. But I'll start by saying I was alone opposing the gang injunction until Grant House changed his mind, and then you came on and we were able to have a public discussion about it. And it turned out that all the gang prevention work that we were doing and that the community was doing paid off. The courts rejected, soundly rejected, the gang injunction proposal, and here we are with gang activity at an all-time low. So, I thank you for that. My other favorite thing about you is that you're an advocate for our libraries. Everywhere I go, people talk about the library as a sanctuary, especially for, you know, young people who need a place to do their homework and not be hanging around on the streets. And I know you inherited that from your dad, right? Yeah. So, those are my comments, but I will be bugging you at the county to help us with all kinds of stuff. And Councilmember Sneddon has some comments, too.
Thank you. Just wanted to say, Councilmember Hart, it's been such an honor serving with you, and I have so much to learn from your knowledge and the way that you conduct your decision-making, and you always so clearly explain your reasoning for why you're coming to the decisions that you're coming to. And your love for the city is so apparent and clear and has been longstanding, clearly. Your environmental record is impeccable and really something to live up to, and I've really appreciated the time that I've had to serve with you, and I'm sorry that it's such a short time. And good luck to you, and I look forward to future conversations about what we can do regionally, but also just following what you do for our environment in our region. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
So, I didn't really know what I was going to say today, and I was, this morning, when I was talking with Julie, I said, "What do I say?" And she said, "Just speak from the heart." And I started laughing, and she didn't understand the joke on that.[482.12][482.12](Laughter). And she didn't mean it herself, so I said, "Well, that's a good way to start." So, first, I'd just like to thank you, not just for your service at the city, but for me personally, over the years, and especially when I was deciding whether or not to run for council, you gave me a good perspective on city issues. And I'd just like to say a few things about you that I think are important for people to understand. You're a very loyal person to both the city and the staff, but none more evidenced than by the fact that you are a true Lakers fan and proudly wore that mantra when it was the D'Angelo Russell days. And you always are looking ahead to the city where the city should be and not necessarily, what is today, but where do we need to go, and it enabled you to make a lot of difficult decisions. And being that, I do have a little bone to pick with you, because out of all the things we talked about, you never told me that you were on the council for 13 years, took 10 years off, and you never told me that your hair used to be longer than mine. So, council can do that to you, I guess. And lastly, I just want to say that you have really sound judgment and, again, looking at this, in particular, this year as the shift to the district elections and making sure that we keep the perspective that we all represent the city as a whole. And in your judgment, I just got to say that, having worked at the Board of Supervisors 14 years, I will say that I do question a little bit, because I left there and you're going there willingly, so good luck and keep smiling over there.[581.12][581.12](Laughter).
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Mr. Hart, I first met you, of course, during that famous traffic demand management effort that, where you came and handed me a big, big stack of little green pencils and a bunch of, a bunch of papers to fill out. So, that was my first impression of you, which wasn't particularly favorable.[601.04][601.04](Laughter). But it was the first, the first and only really time we had really good valuable data from where our employees lived and worked and how they got to work. Then, of course, you came on council, and I was a council observer and finger-wagger and watched you all that time, and when you advocated for the basketball courts down at the beach, that was your magnum opus. And then, now, this last, this last go-around, I just, I just have one prevailing question. That is, that bicycle has been in your office for the last, you know, five years. Is that, the tires have both been flat. Has that ever gone anywhere besides your, I just, I mean, I just got to know before you leave.
Thank you, Mr. Rouse.
I think I'll, I think I'll move it into your office, really.[644.04][644.04](Laughter).
Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Growing up here and seeing you represent us and then getting to the age of where I could vote and vote for you, and then getting to the point where you were helping me run a campaign, it's just a surreal feeling, you know, that, that I got to grow up with you being a representative and then serve with you as well. And, yeah, I just, my only regret is not being able to serve with you longer, but I know that you're going to do great things for the county, and I appreciate everything you've done.
Are you old enough to be his dad? I think that's what he's trying to say.[690.74][690.74](Laughter).
I don't want to do that math.[693.66][693.66](Laughter).
I don't see any public comment speakers on this item. And Mr. Peters.
I have a comment.
And, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Dominguez, I'm so sorry. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart, I respect the thousands of hours you've put in over the extent at the planning commission and city council. This job is difficult, requires long hours, many conversations, and you've definitely put them in. Thank you for your service to the city, to the region, to the constituents of Santa Barbara. You're out of the frying pan into the fire. You're going into a bigger jurisdiction with more work to do. I hope you do great work there. I hope you have many successes, and please call us if you need any information or any help. We'd be glad to help out, and we'll do the same, and best of luck, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Mr. Peters, and please fill out a slip before you leave.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, Councilman Hart. I'm new to Santa Barbara. Of course, that means when I first came here, I didn't know you, so instead, I underwrote Jack Uchaferry's campaign for your seat just a little while ago, and so maybe today's a good day to ask you to forgive me. I don't know.[778.16][778.16](Laughter). Since that time, you and I have had a few handful of conversations, and as I walk away from each one of those, I'm impressed, and I look forward to the next time. I look forward to our interactions on the SB CAG board. I'll be standing at the podium, talking to you about bicycles and other related topics. I wish you well. Thank you.
We'll close the public comment period on this item, then, and thank you so much. You have to stay for the whole meeting, and so we'll go to item number four. Madam Clerk.
Item four, commemoration of the Belmont Ellen Canto's 100th anniversary.
Thanks for being here.
Of course.
So, the Belmont Ellen Canto Hotel is celebrating 100 years. Crazy. Whereas in 1918, the Ellen Canto Hotel in Garden Villas officially opened its doors as a cottage hotel in the area deemed the American Riviera. And whereas Belmont Ellen Canto, Santa Barbara's only Forbes five-star property, now owned by Belmont Limited, recently underwent a multimillion-dollar renovation, yet has maintained its original charm and character, still featuring craftsmen and Spanish colonial-style architecture, 100-year-old wisteria vines, lovely, and the property's iconic centerpiece, Lily Pond and Pergola. And whereas Ellen Canto means the enchanted, and true to its name, the property has continued to enchant locals, visitors, and celebrities with its pristine grounds, upscale facilities, and stunning views of Santa Barbara, the Channel Islands, and the Pacific Ocean, making it a favorite getaway for such notables as Franklin D. Roosevelt, Hedy Lamarr, Clark Gable, Carol Lombard, and many contemporary actors, musicians, politicians, and famous personalities. And whereas Belmont Ellen Canto is a leader among environmentally friendly businesses with the goal to become Santa Barbara's first zero-waste business, and whereas Belmont Ellen Canto pride of service includes community service such as management and staff regularly dedicating their time, energy, and resources to support local nonprofits, including Habitat Restoration at the Channel Islands, Santa Barbara Bucket Brigade, Santa Barbara Zoo, Food Bank of Santa Barbara, Girls, Inc., and Youth Interactive, among others. Now, therefore, I, Kathy Maria, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Santa Barbara, do hereby congratulate the Belmont Ellen Canto on its milestone 100th anniversary, recognizing the property's significance and Santa Barbara's rich history and the positive impact it continues to have on the local community. Congratulations.[973.86][973.86](Applause).
You can say a few words?
Okay. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for inviting all of us. I am new to the Belmont Ellen Canto. I started November 1st. I've been in the industry a very long time. We won't say how long. This is an exquisite hotel, walking distance from my house. I've been living in Santa Barbara for about four years, absolutely enchanted with Santa Barbara and the Belmont Ellen Canto. I have a new team, a new director of sales. Rob Roche came from L.A. Peninsula Hotel. He started around the same time I did. Mark's been with the property for quite a while. He's our manager, he's my right hand, left hand, right foot, left foot. He does everything. And then we have Chris, who's in charge of purchasing, and his wife works...
Right here.
Right here.
Holly Pareja.
Yes. So, we're just delighted to be here. If there's anything we can do, please, I gave my card to the mayor so that, you know, we want to make sure we're good partners in Santa Barbara. That's why we do a lot of community service, but we want to take this hotel to an even more enchanted level.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, that closes our ceremonial items. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So, we'll go to open public comment, and this is our opportunity to hear from the public on items not on the agenda. Be aware that we can't really get into a discussion with you to adhere to the Brown Act, but if you want to make appointments with us, Holly Pareja is here. There she is in the back. And/or she can direct you to staff who can answer your questions. Caroline, you will be first. Everyone gets three minutes at the microphone. Let me give that. Mr. Clausen, next. Phil Walker, to be followed by Carrie Kelly. Welcome.
Thank you. Members of the Santa Barbara City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. A recurring issue during public comment is how best to help the homeless. We feel compassion at the sight of anyone living in such a painful and undignified manner, ever mindful that each and every single homeless person is made in the image and likeness of God, just the same as you and I. What are the failures of our society and our leadership that result in a person becoming homeless? Many become homeless and stay that way because of drug addiction, so it makes sense that we create public policies that decrease the amount of harmful and addictive drugs in our communities. This will prevent many people from becoming homeless in the first place, which is the first step to solving the problem. Tragically, just the opposite of wise and thoughtful public policy happened in 2016 when Proposition 64 was passed, which made marijuana legal in California. Legal marijuana in Santa Barbara will only make life more difficult for people who already struggle with staying away from drugs and crime, and more difficult for them to stay employed and be responsible and self-sufficient members of society. Again, we will suffer the predictable results of ignoring common sense, as this bad policy stays in place year after year, quietly contributing to the number of people who become unable to care for themselves and ultimately become homeless. As well, voters must hold our elected officials accountable and politely ask them, "Did you support a yes vote on Proposition 64, making marijuana legal in California? Or did you think carefully about the issue, show leadership, and explain to your constituents why Proposition 64 was a bad idea and will only bring problems? And voters, did you do your part to help our city council and your fellow voters to make good decisions by coming to speak at this podium during public comment and advise everyone to vote no on Proposition 64? If we are ever going to solve the problem of homelessness, it will take all members of our community working together using common sense and good judgment. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you, and may everyone listening have a good afternoon."
Mr. Clausen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. First, thank you to Mr. Hart for your service. I think Councilmember Gutierrez has offered us an embarrassing perspective on your longevity. But, on to business. At the August 14th meeting of the City Council during an appeal, Councilmember Sneddon had city staff clarify that it was the will of the council in 2013 for a Bungalow Haven historic district to be established. At that time, city planner Renee Brooke replied that the five-year delay was due to insufficient staff resources and other projects requiring more immediate resolution. I'm not a resident within that district. I have no personal interest in it, but I do have an interest to see that Santa Barbara's historic resources are preserved whenever possible. Here is a district whose formal designation and protection seems all but completed but for some staff work. Ms. Brooke stated her staff is working on revisions to Municipal Code Chapter 222, Historic Structures, to present to the council before continuing with the designation within that chapter. With all due respect, and I have great personal regard for the efforts that all city staff at all levels do, five years seems like a long time to wait, even for a code revision that in many ways will define the look and feel of the city and which drives much of the historic tourism we enjoy. If the resources needed to complete this project involve unskilled office labor, I encourage the city to seek volunteer citizens to help. There are many of us interested in historic preservation who would be willing to invest time to complete this project and perhaps others in the same vein. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Walker, come on up. You'll be followed by Carrie Kelly, Tim Mahoney, Robert Burke. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Councilman slash supervisor Hart, congratulations once again. Your service has been well appreciated. I see City Attorney Cologne is back. I wore that, but it was just a wrap for six, eight weeks. Little League baseball, inside slider, it was fast, it hurt. Okay. Okay. On Quinientos Street, you know, we have the pedestrian safety islands, and there's more and more public notice about the impact of these traffic calming impediments to evacuation, hitting the airways, and in the press, and it was a big concern in the Camp Fire in Paradise, and they attributed it to some unfortunate fatalities due to those. So, it's a study. I don't like them, I'll be honest with you. I've got them right down the corner from me, and, you know, they did, Granite and the city did such a good job on the overlay on Quinientos that was tore up so bad by the, oh, Thomas Fire, and then all the heavy debris haulers pounding the daylights out of it. It looked like it was real bad, but the roadbed today is just beautiful. It's, they use the recycled paving, and I prefer to walk on that than on the unforgiving concrete sidewalks, and I'm not talking about the uplifts or anything, I'm just talking about the lack of cushion. But if they could just put a half-inch stripe like they did, yellow stripe like they did on Annapamooze Street, and segment it, break it up every, you know, seven foot, doesn't have to be a solid line, but it'd be real good to have that in case you did have to evacuation requirements in a fire or flood or whatever. And it, excuse me, it differentiates two lanes, which is good and needed on that street. So, one other quick thing with yellow and red, the, let's see, the community development, notice of development signs, they're great, but the, they'd need to use an UV inhibitor because within a month or two, you cannot read them, so it'd be good to have something you can read. And also the red, one other quick thing, the U.S. Postal Service, I guess, has a permission, I don't know if it's permission granted or understood or whatever, but they park in the red spots, and when they park in a red zone at a corner of an intersection, it's doubled down on risk. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Kelly.
Hello. My name is Carrie Kelly, and I am delighted to be here as the new executive director of downtown Santa Barbara. I wanted to come over and introduce myself, and hopefully after the holidays, I'll get to meet each and every one of you, if I haven't already, and some of you I have. We arrived in Santa Barbara, my family and I, on Friday night and made our way over to the parade, and I have to say, what an amazing parade that was. It was just thrilling, you know, Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara shined that night, but particularly the downtown shined that night, and I really appreciate all the council members participating in the parade as well. We had amazing staff members working out and amazing volunteers and amazing participants, and it was just a really great event, and I got to be there in unofficial capacity, so that was kind of nice to view it and then sort of jump in in the next year to help plan that. I really appreciate the council's cooperation as the organization searched for a new executive director. It's been a little while, it seems like about a year has passed, so I really appreciate the city and the council's cooperation as the search continued. I'm so excited to be here. It's such a great place. When I started to interview, I kept telling my husband how nice everybody was and how beautiful the downtown was, and we got to explore a lot. We came from Arizona, so it's a big shift for us, but it's such a beautiful place, and I'm so excited to be a part of it and to be here at the downtown organization. I really look forward to working with the council and staff members as we strengthen our relationship and also reimagine the downtown area. So, thank you, and I'm sure you'll be hearing from me in the future.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Tim Mahoney? You'll be followed by Robert Burke, and Lee Muldaver will be the final speaker. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Tim Mahoney, I'm with Southern California Gas Company. Also, Mr. Hart, thank you again for all your services. No one seemed to mention your tennis advocate, so you and I tend to see each other at La Espacita, so I'll see you there and up at the Board of Supervisors. But today, I wanted to talk about a couple of things regarding Southern California Gas Company. One is renewable natural gas, and the other one is a balanced energy. So, we're moving into an area of renewable natural gas. This is really nothing new to you folks in the city here, but that is gas from particularly three places: wastewater treatment plants, sewer plants, the old dumps, Tahiguis, your landfills, and the dairies of central California. So, all of those areas produce methane. SoCal Gas is in the process of capturing that renewable natural gas, which right now is just going into the atmosphere. We scrub it, you clean it, you put it in your pipeline, and then that becomes a renewable natural gas source. In our town, of course, Marburg runs all their trash trucks on natural gas. Many of the other facilities, Los, I mean, the, your own personal sewer plant down there is, has a natural gas supply, as does Tahiguis. So, that, that is an up-and-coming item, which I'll be coming back and individually talking to you more about, because this is a very exciting way to go, especially when you think that if you capture that renewable natural gas, and we're also trying to move into the heavy-duty trucking industry, so instead of diesel-running trucks, you would have them on natural gas. Works extremely well... Works extremely well for trucks that are in what is a traditional run, where every day they essentially make the same route. That can be very useful in that regard. The other item, and lastly here, is the idea that, and we saw it this year in Senate Bill 100, where there is a movement in California to electrify everything. And that is a mistake. I'm an electrical customer. I want my electricity. It's good. But I don't want to heat my house, and I don't want to cook. And that is what's called customer choice and a balanced energy portfolio. Right now, if anybody wants to turn their house or their business over to electric, they can. There's nothing stopping them. But they don't, because it's just too expensive. So I get calls every day from people in the gold medallion homes, and they're saying, how do I, it's winter time, I'm cold. I flip on my electricity heating to heat my three-bedroom, two-bath house, and my bill is sky-high. I want to go to natural gas. So that's a process which I see in the marketplace. And I just wanted to bring these attentions, because it's also easy somehow to just say, oh, solar and wind electrify. But that's really a lot more to it than that, and there's an item about the customer choice. So thank you for having me up today, and I'll be bringing you some more information. Much appreciated.
Very good. Thank you. Robert Burke?
I recite these lines every morning. I wrote it. I call it the grant prayer, and I purposely intended them to be 12 sentences long. Grant me the honor and the privilege to arise and embrace this gift this day with cheer, grace, and peace. Grant love, valor, delight, gratitude, abundance, and atonement. Accompany me on my path, spreading fun, sparkle, and mystery to all that comes my way. Grant my eyes see the wonder of creation, my ears hear the harmony of the universe, and my mouth speaks the beauty of all that is. Grant me the intelligence and the enlightenment to receive what breathes life and light and to release what denies it. Grant my life and work imbue integrity and bestow reverence upon self, others, and the planet. Grant me serenity for what is, acceptance for what can be, and faith for what to do. Grant me a still and calm sanctuary to experience our presence. Grant me wisdom when I make a judgment, knowing that the only choice is the choice between love and fear. Grant me patience for those with different challenges, acceptance for those with different choices, and love for every neighbor. Grant the sacred sustenance for this blessed temple, the holy food from hallowed ground. Grant me constant contact with Source. Grant finally that I remember joy, play, and laughter, as I, a child of divine essence, walk hand in hand with thee. Madam Mayor.
Thanks. Mr. Muldaver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Councilman Dominguez in South Africa, Mr. Casey, and members of the staff. I'm Lee Muldaver, speaking as an individual. I would have said something nice about Mr. Hart, but since we rely on him so much as our council liaison from Creeks and Watersheds, and he's taking early leave, I'll just tell him what I really think when he's sworn in as our supervisor. But there sometimes is a sense, when we listen to national news and watch what's going on in Washington, that public service, community service, government itself, is divided and dysfunctional. And yet, almost every week that I spend here in Santa Barbara, the city and county teaches me the opposite. And last Sunday was a good example of that. A year ago, we were all hunkered down, wearing masks because of the fire. It was before even the debris flow. And they had to cancel the Parade of Lights, which was not done lightly, because the city and the businesses and the boat owners planned for that months in advance, to get a day, date, time commitments. This year, it went forward, and I saw an incredible partnership from the waterfront department, from the director and steward and Mick Cronman, and the people out on the streets with the vests directing traffic, from the merchants who lease space on the wharf and down by the Breakwater and the waterfront, from the men and women who own boats, both commercial and pleasure, who took great joy in decorating their boats and parading to share the seasonal spirit. And I saw a number of members of the council at the reviewing stand. And this is part of the Santa Barbara spirit, and it's part of government cooperating with the community, which you don't see in other parts of the United States. And I wish this spirit, perhaps through Salud Carvajal or Senator Feinstein or Harris, could be exported more often to Washington. But I'd like to say, as you know and as Mr. Casey knows, these kind of events that go so well don't happen by accident. And not only is Councilman Hart leaving, but one of the people who's made Parade of Lights really special for a long time is Dominique Somario. And she's been with the city until this weekend for 10 years. She's added grace and inclusiveness and imagination and a positive spirit to every project she's worked on. And she was part of the parade, and I want to wish her well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muldaver. That closes public comments, and we'll go to the consent calendar. And as Mr. Muldaver alluded to, Councilmember Dominguez is participating in the meeting from South Africa. So the votes that we take today will be roll-call votes. And you have items to read from the consent calendar.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a few, so sit back. Okay. Item six, adoption of ordinance for authorization to execute amendment to state revolving fund loan agreement for the desalination plant reactivation. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the approval and execution by the city administrator of Amendment Number Three to installment sale agreement for the desalination plant reactivation project, drinking water state revolving fund project, Number 421001005C, Agreement Number D1502006. Item seven, adoption of ordinance of a major encroachment permit for installation and maintenance of stormwater treatment devices at 634 Anacapa Street. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving a major encroachment permit for installation and maintenance of private stormwater treatment devices in parkways on Anacapa Street and Artega Street, fronting the parcel at 634 Anacapa Street, APN Number 031151020. Item eight, adoption of the 2018 to 2020 Fire Management Association Memorandum of Understanding. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adopting the 2018 through 2020 Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Fire Management Association. Item nine, adoption of 2018 to 2020 General Unit Memorandum of Understanding. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adopting the 2018 through 2020 Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara City Employees Association, General Unit, and providing for compensation changes for confidential employees. Item 10, adoption of ordinance to authorize the use of project labor agreements on city public works projects. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, amending Chapter 4.52 of the Santa Barbara Municipal Code by adding Section 4.52.200 to authorize the use of project labor agreements on city public works projects, having an estimated value of $5 million and subject to Section 519 of the city charter. Item 11, resolution of acceptance of a donation from the Stern Family Trust to the Parks and Recreation Department. Recommendation, the council, A, adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, accepting a donation from the Stern Family Trust in the amount of $360,947.53 for the exclusive use and benefit of the city Parks and Recreation Department tennis facilities. And B, increased appropriations and estimated revenues in the fiscal year 2019, Parks and Recreation Department miscellaneous grants fund in the amount of $360,947.53. Item 12, resolution to accept a grant deed for the state and Alamar pedestrian crossing safety project. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing acceptance of a grant deed for the purposes of a public sidewalk and all related purposes and uses located over a portion of the property located at 2800 State Street, and authorizing the Public Works Director to execute any related documents that may be required, all relating to the state and Alamar traffic signal upgrades project, and consenting to the recordation of the grant deed in the County of Santa Barbara Recorder's Office. Item 13, records destruction for police department. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, relating to the destruction of records held by the police department. And last one, Number 14, grant funding for the renewal of the Wildland Fire Plan. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, declaring its intention to apply for funding from the Forest Health Grant Program as provided through the Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund.
Thank you. We've been asked to pull Items 7, 10, 12, and 14. You've read all of them. We'll go in order. Number seven, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a leasehold interest within the proximity of that project, so I will be stepping down from that vote.
Thanks.
Have a good vote on that separately, please.
Very good. Do I have a motion for Number seven? Friedman? I'll second it. Murillo? A roll-call on Number seven, which is the adoption of ordinance of a major encroachment permit for installation and maintenance of stormwater treatment devices at 634 Anacapa Street.
Very good. That is motion by Councilmember Friedman, seconded by Mayor Murillo. Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Rouse?
Abstaining.
Abstaining. Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Murillo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six in favor, one abstention.
Very good. Item Number 10, Mr. Rouse and Ms. Sneddon both want to talk about that.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Mr. Rouse, was your abstention per conflict of interest?
Yes, sir.
Would you describe the economic interest that you're concerned with that's required by state law?
Oh, okay. I kind of thought I had. I have a leasehold interest within the proximity of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's on Number seven.
Yes.
Okay. So go ahead. You have the mic, Number 10.
I don't care to discuss, but I will be voting no, and I would like to vote separately.
If you could have the clerk read Item 10, so the public knows what item we're talking about, that would be great.
Very good. Thank you.
Item 10 is the adoption of ordinance to authorize the use of project labor agreements on city public works projects.
So you'll be voting no. Thank you. Ms. Sneddon?
Yes, so I had some questions from the staff report and from the ordinance itself. So I'm not sure who to direct the questions to, so I'll just ask outright. So first, I have questions about timing. So what happens first? First, we have the ordinance, and then we have the negotiations, and then we approve the negotiations? Or if you could help me understand the stepping through the timing?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. So the ordinance, if approved today, would go into effect 30 days from now. However, as we explained at the meeting last week, we have a substantial number of projects in the pipeline that are in design and will be bid as soon as they are done being designed. I'm afraid I don't have a comprehensive list of those and don't know how many of them would be over the $5 million threshold, but I do know, for example, the multimodal pathway on La Espacita is one that we expect to be ready for bidding before we would have finished negotiation or right about the same time we'd finish negotiation of project labor agreement. But that is not being completed in a manner that has anticipated a project labor agreement. And also, we have a tight timeline for expending that money because it's a grant fund, so we'll, you know, that's one that I am anxious that we not delay. And I can't tell you what other projects might be out there. What council had discussed last week was that the agreement, project labor agreement requirement would go into effect at such time that council had approved it. We will be coming back to council in January or February for direction on what to include in that project labor agreement. Some of the preliminary things that were being discussed last week were issues like who is required to pay into the union trust for health and who is not. So we want to get further direction from council on some of the items, and we will be putting together a report to seek that information from council. And then we'll begin deliberations and negotiations with the unions. So that is the manner in which it will happen. Once we have a recommended project labor agreement, we would return to council for authorization, and at that time, we would begin applying the section of the ordinance that requires it.
So approval of this today makes it go into effect 30 days from today? Correct? But we won't have the terms negotiated yet?
That's correct.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon?
Mr. Cologne?
We actually debated this issue fairly robustly in my office. I believe that the ordinance as drafted makes it clear that the council has to take that next step of approving a project labor agreement before we begin implementation. So there are a couple of issues here. Normally, an ordinance goes into effect on the 31st day after adoption. We can't change that. What we could do is add a delayed implementation date. That would be another section that said that the requirement for PLA doesn't go into effect until we have a negotiated PLA. I don't think you need to do that, because there's case law that recognizes your authority to give administrative instructions. So the second and third paragraphs, I think, if I remember right, of the CAR are really talking about that administrative instruction and what Ms. Bjork said about the obvious, that we can't turn on this PLA until it's ready.
Okay, I guess I have questions about the words "going into effect" and "implementation." So just legally, there's a difference there?
Yes. The charter tells us how ordinances are adopted and when they become effective. And that 31-day period, as well as the week between introduction and second reading, is there for two purposes. The week between introduction and adoption is to force you to deliberate, to allow the public to tell you, hey, what are you doing? Or, yeah, we like it. And then the implement, excuse me, the effective date being delayed 30 days recognizes the populist rebellion initiative and referendum rights of the people. So that 30-day period is a time when people might gather signatures to referend any kind of legislative act like an ordinance here. Implementation is expressly stating in the ordinance, this does not become applicable to our $5 million projects until the project labor agreement is in place and drafted.
So that statement right there, that it doesn't go, it doesn't get implemented until the project labor agreement is negotiated, I don't see that language in here. I think it, I don't see it in the ordinance itself, that it's pending council approval of terms of negotiation. And I see a reference to it in the staff report, but the ordinance itself says shall include a requirement for project labor agreement, and then doesn't have any language about it being contingent on our having those negotiations. And I know it's, I mean, I felt like at the time it was the will of the council that those negotiations be an important part of the implementation, that those be successful negotiations. So what in the ordinance makes... So, what, what in the ordinance makes that so?
Again, I believe the staff report, if you approved, excuse me, adopt this ordinance on second reading, I think the staff report provides a good record of your administrative direction not to go forward until we have the PLA. Where could that blow up? I would be concerned about, I could imagine a disgruntled contractor during the interim period before the PLA is drafted and approved, being upset about a $5 million project. I, I don't know that that will happen. And again, we all feel reasonably confident that this administrative direction reflected in the CAR will work. If you want belt and suspenders, my advice would be to add a subsection C that explicitly said that the PLA wouldn't be implemented until you had approved the terms of the actual negotiated agreement.
Okay. So, for two, the two concerns I have, one, that it doesn't say anywhere in this staff report or in the ordinance itself, anything about local hire preferences or the concentric circles of hire, local tri-county, county outward from there. There's no reference or direction in this ordinance itself or in the staff report to mention local hire, which I believe was the purpose of the agreement. So, I, I would like it in the actual ordinance, the, did you say, the third subsection C? Or, or adding just after the shall, on Council approval of terms of negotiation. I'm concerned that we're doing the shall language, which, which comes before the actual negotiations are approved, or even the listing of what it's going into the negotiations approved. So, as, as the ordinance itself doesn't have any local reference and doesn't, it doesn't ensure that that happens before it goes into effect.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, we felt comfortable that the Council's ability to approve or reject a resolution on the actual project labor agreement would give the Council the opportunity to make sure that local hire, not local preference, that's really difficult, but that local hire and the other items you discussed while I was foolishly watching you on TV last Tuesday. So, those, those things will be in the PLA, and you'll have to approve that. I suppose as an interim move, we could come back with a list of deal points that we were going to include to confirm.
I don't even think that's necessary as long as the language, I'll make the motion to include the language, shall on Council approval of terms of negotiation include requirement for project labor agreement, just so that it's in the actual ordinance itself. The ordinance as it stands does not rest on any further negotiation, and I think it's a, for clarifying point, that it doesn't go into effect, or it doesn't get implemented until, until that, those terms of negotiation are met. I don't, I don't think we need to delay until those are, points are all laid out, but just if it's in the ordinance as a placeholder now, then we can work those terms out that we discussed at our last meeting.
Okay. So, you can't vote for it as it is, and you've made a motion?
I've made a motion.
And we'll hear if there's a second? I don't hear a second also.
Point of wonder, Madam Mayor, for the second comes, can we, can we second a second reading of an ordinance? Is that amendment to that? Will you amend a second reading of an ordinance? Can we, can we do that?
Yes, but it turns into a new introduction. So, the effect of...
So, the second reading would be next year?
Correct.
So, that's one thing to consider if the motion gets a second.
Well, for the point of discussion, I'll second it, but it's a little disingenuous because I do plan to vote against the item, so, but just for the discussion points that Ms., because Ms. Sneddon makes some great points that are not in the CAR.
So, you, you're going to vote against it?
I'm going to second the motion.
But you're seconding the motion? Okay. So, any other discussion on that? Mr. Hart, your light's on.
Yeah, I appreciate Councilmember Sneddon trying to clarify things, but I think that I'm convinced by the city attorney's explanation that it isn't necessary, and in order to move this forward and just keep the momentum going and have, have these legitimate questions about the deal parameters and the negotiating points come to the future Council in the future, I think is the best way just to move forward in the least divisive way possible.
Okay. And I agree with you, Mr. Hart. I'll be voting against the motion. I'm satisfied that staff has done their work and that this will go forward in the right way. So, if there's no other discussion, we can take a roll call on the motion.
If I could just ask Councilmember Sneddon to repeat the motion.
I made a motion to include in the ordinance after the word shall, to include on Council approval of terms of negotiation, which is quite innocuous, actually. That was my motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Mayor Protam Rouse, to add language, to include in the ordinance after the word shall, on a Council approval of terms of negotiation. Councilmember Friedman?
May I just make a suggestion there, just for clarity? It would be on Council approval of terms of negotiation of the approved project labor agreement.
Yeah, I really am just trying to add the assurance in there that we'll be negotiating. And if we say shall, then that means we have to, and it takes away a little bit of our negotiating power to be able to negotiate some of those things that we discussed, which are not in the staff report and are not in the ordinance. So, just a placeholder that that negotiation will occur, that's all.
Okay. We're ready for the roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Councilmember Friedman?
No.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
No.
Councilmember Hart?
No.
Mayor Protam Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Mayor Mario?
No. So, that fails with...
That fails with no votes from Councilmembers Friedman, Gutierrez, and Hart.
Very good.
And you, Mayor Mario.
Thanks. Mr. Hart, another motion?
I'll make the original motion.
Okay. Hart and Friedman, any discussion on that? We'll take a roll call vote on that, then. This is item number 10.
This is for item 10, motion by Councilmember Hart, seconded by Councilmember Friedman, for the staff recommendation as listed in the agenda. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Rouse?
No.
Councilmember Sneddon?
No.
Councilmember Dominguez?
No.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
And Mayor Mario?
Aye.
That carries four to three with no's from Mayor Protam Rouse and Councilmember Sneddon and Dominguez.
Okay. We'll move on to the next consent item under discussion. Item 12, Bonnie Raisin, a member of the public, has asked to speak on this item. Would you just read the title to remind us, Ms. Clerk?
Certainly. Item 12, resolution to accept a grant deed for the state and Alamar pedestrian crossing safety project.
Welcome, Ms. Raisin.
I'm Bonnie Raisin. Thank you. I think I may be a little bit out of sync as far as public, I should have probably done this at public speaking, but it caught my eye because of the selectivity of the repairs and additions from Public Works. And while I know that that, that safety crossings are a must, particularly at intersections with neighborhoods or schools adjacent, but do we have to wait for grants to start work on our sidewalks and some of our streets that are still in need of repair? I know there's a lot of storm drain work going on, and maybe that's the precursor to working on what's above the sewers and the storm drains. But the sidewalks remain cracked, and I think the trees are very responsible, and I know how we feel about our trees in Santa Barbara, but they are uprooting portions of the sidewalk, not so much on the east side. But I walk down Delavina occasionally to Powell Garage, who treats my car very well, and it's pretty, pretty rocky and pretty dangerous for someone who is frail or not agile, and so I'm concerned about that. We did pass a one-cent sales tax, and the bells and whistles and the cry was that, oh, we're going to use that for infrastructure. I mean, that's what the public understood, and I, I know that a portion of that has gone to pensions, which is fine. I mean, I guess that's inevitable. But I'd really like an update from Public Works on just how they intend to proceed on what the good citizens of Santa Barbara are trusting, trusting that they will make visible some of the, the repairs that involve our sidewalks and our streets where they need painting. Half of Bath Street has been paved, you know? I'm waiting with breath, faded breath for the rest of it because it looks pretty good. I, I know I talk about this a lot, and I do know, I do, I do comprehend the task of the city council in there, and it's enormous, and I appreciate that. And best of luck to you, Mr. Hart. I do wish you well. I'll have to start going back to the supervisor meetings, I guess.
Nine in the morning, yeah.
Just a bug you, no, I won't do that. But I implore you to ask the Public Works to give an explanation of their moves, you know, in what direction and what the public can expect. I may be a lone voice out there, but I bet a lot of people feel the same way, so this is not a complaint, it's just a very hefty suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll include that in our vote when we move the whole consent calendar, Ms. Raisin. So, number 14, Ms. Sneddon, you still, okay, can you remind us, Madam Clerk, 14?
Certainly. Item 14 is grant funding for the renewal of the wild land fire plan.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just had a really quick question. If this grant funding is specifically for vegetation removal only, or can it be applied to evacuation plans or other uses, or is this just for vegetation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, actually, it's neither. This is for the plan itself, and the plan is all-inclusive. But it's the, it's the study and the environmental impact report that gets us to the point where we have a completed wildland fire plan. So, the reason that it takes so long is because it's going to require a great deal of public vetting, public meetings, and, and just generally involving the whole community as well as every city division.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm very happy to see this underway and approving this.
Since you're there, can you describe the timing? We touched on it last week, but for the public's edification?
The timing so far is we've already started the writing process. The grant application is due December 19th, which is part of the rush at the moment, is completing the application process, which is extensive. The time period in between the grant application and the grant acceptance is until March 19th. So, we'll know in March whether the, the state has granted the money, and then the, we can release things for RFPs and things like that. In the meantime, we'll be, of course, writing with city staff. It's going to involve planning, so we need, of course, to get planners on board and authorization from planning to, for them to help with the work on the environmental impact report. And then the actual cash, if we were to be fortunate enough to receive this award, would come in September, so that at that point, we can start paying our consultants for the creation of this document.
Thank you for that information.
I'm sorry, I didn't put an end date on it, but we're hoping for 20 months, tops.
Very good. Thank you. So, if there's no other objection, we'll wait for the reading, and we'll move the remainder of the consent calendar items. Do I have a motion? Mr. Rouse? And a second from Hart. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
And Mayor Mario?
Aye. So, that concludes the consent calendar, and the Finance Committee met today, I believe. That's the next item to report back to us. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today and heard a presentation about the comprehensive annual fiscal report, financial report, staff's been working on since the middle of the year. The auditor, who is employed by the city to evaluate those documents, was here at the meeting as well and gave an unmodified opinion about the accuracy of the audit and was very complimentary about the city staff's work. Notably, the Finance Department staff has received numerous commendations, and last year, again, was recognized for its outstanding documentation of the city's financial condition, and that item will be coming back, I think, to the Council on a future meeting.
Very good. That moves us to item number 27. Madam Clerk?
Item 27, certification of the election results of the November 6, 2018 special municipal election, and approval of process to fill District 6 vacancy. Recommendation that Council A adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, reciting the fact of the vote-by-mail special municipal election held on November 6, 2018, and declaring the results and such other matters as required by the state elections code. And B, approve the proposed process to select a candidate to fill the vacancy resulting from the election of Councilmember Greg Hart to the County Board of Supervisors, and I'm going to move chairs.
Very good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. We are here, as I said, to do two things. We are going to be certifying the election results from the past November election and also approving a proposed process to fill the vacancy that results from Councilmember Hart's resignation. Okay. For the certification of the November 6, 2018 election results, the voters approved two charter amendment ballot measures at the November 6, 2018 election. Measure B, discussed even-year elections, and Measure C, discussed district elections. Both of these measures passed with large margins. Measure B with 70.78% in favor, and Measure C with 75.64% in favor. So, staff recommends, recommends the Council approve the resolution declaring the results of the election. Moving on to the process to fill the vacancy resulting from Councilmember Hart's resignation because of his election to the County Board of Supervisors. So, as we've discussed today, Councilmember Hart was elected to the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors. He has submitted his resignation of his city council seat. That resignation is effective January 7th, and thus, his district, the District 6 seat will be vacant. And this newly adopted charter amendment provides for a process to fill the vacancy via special election and making interim appointment to the seat before the election. Staff will return to Council at our next meeting, which is the January 8, 2019 meeting, for Council to call that special election to fill the seat. That election would be held on November 5, 2019, and it would be consolidated with the city's general election, that's already happening that day, to fill Council seats for Districts 1, 2, and 3. After Council calls that special election, Council may then consider an interim appointment to the District 6 seat until the candidate elected at the special election has taken To talk through the process, the applicants would submit an application to the city clerk's office. Council would review the applicants and interview the applicants at a council meeting, and then appoint an interim council member. The timeline is having Council approve this appointment process today. January 7th is the effective date of Councilmember Hart's resignation. Council would call the special election the next day at the January 8 meeting. The clerk would begin accepting applications that next day, January 9th. Applications would be due on January 28th. At the council meeting on February 5th, applicants would interview. At the council meeting on February 5th, applicants would interview. At that next council meeting, February 12th, council could make an appointment and swear in the appointed member if they so choose at that meeting. And of course, this process is subject to change by council. And so we have our recommended actions, which are to adopt the resolution of the Council of City of Santa Barbara reciting the fact of the vote-by-mail special municipal election held on November 6, 2018, and declaring the results and such other matters as required by the State Elections Code, and to approve the proposed process to select a candidate to fill the vacancy resulting from the election of Councilmember Hart to the County Board of Supervisors. And that is my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
So pretty straightforward. We're accepting the election results of last year and then approving the process that you've just outlined with that timeframe. Are there questions from the council on this? I don't see any lights. Mr. Dominguez?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Speaker slips? No. Then I'll, Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the staff recommendation. We did talk about this at length with Judge Ochoa in our own article, hammering out the details, so I think I'm comfortable with the process. I'd like to move staff recommendation.
And that was a second from Mr. Friedman. Any other discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Thank you.
Very good. Mayor Pretam Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hart.
Aye.
And Mayor Muriel.
Aye.
That carries unanimously? Very good. To the next item. Number 28.
Back in my chair, I will read. Number 28, which is Montecito Water District Desalination Water Sales Agreement Status Update. And there is a resolution I will read here. Recommendation that Council B adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara designating the city administrator to execute and deliver an application to the State Water Resources Control Board for a safe drinking water state revolving fund loan for the expansion of the Charles E. Meyer desalination plant. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'm sorry, I did this recently before, too. Here we go. This is the problem with having such a competent staff. I don't get up here very often.
Very good.
Good afternoon and noon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director, and I'm here today with Joshua Hagmark to give you an update on the status of the water sales agreement to Montecito Water District. Today, we'll be asking, we have three recommendations. One is that you receive an update on the status of negotiations. The second is that you authorize application for a state revolving fund loan for the expansion of the desalination plant, and we will get into the reasoning for that as we go through the presentation. And the third is to get confirmation from council regarding the continuation of the ad hoc negotiations advisory committee for the water sales agreement, as well as requesting that you fill the outgoing Councilmember Hart's seat with another council member should you so wish. I just want to start out with introducing the negotiating team for the city. As you can see from this slide, it's been a big group, in addition to myself, Joshua Hagmark, our Water Resources Manager, Kelly Dyer, the Water Supply Manager, Daniel Henchke, the Assistant City Attorney, Bob Samario, our Finance Director, Jennifer Tomaszowski, our Finance and Treasury Manager, and Malcolm Hamilton, our Water Analyst. Also want to acknowledge Sarah Connect, who had previously put a lot of time into this agreement as well. So you can see a lot of staff time's been put into talking and negotiating for this agreement. So today, we're going to go quickly over the background of the negotiations, the principles on which we have based the negotiations, the key terms of the agreement, the funding allocations for the plant and the pipeline, and the basics of how we would expect that to work, and then cover the next steps, and finally, to seek your recommendations as just outlined. So by way of background, the D-SAL plant was constructed in 1990, was completed in 1992 as an emergency plant and a regional facility for the city, Galita Water District and Montecito Sanitary District, excuse me, Montecito Water District. And in 1994, the city, at the direction of council, placed it in long-term standby. However, they also affirmed that they wanted to have it be turned into a permanent rather than an emergency plant. So the staff pursued that option and continued to go through the process of making it a permanent part of our water supply. We did secure the permits necessary for that. However, both Montecito and Galita decided that they did not want to continue to participate in the plant, and they stopped working with us on the plant at that point in time. In 2014, as we were going into the third year of this now eight-year drought, the city began reactivation of the desalination plant, and Montecito also requested at that time to participate in the D-SAL plant. Staff directed, was directed by council to begin formal negotiations with Montecito in 2015, but that was not substantially, we received no substantial progress until that negotiation stopped. In 2016, Montecito again indicated that they would like to talk to us about procuring water from the D-SAL plant. And so we did acknowledge that there was a fair amount of staff work and then some consultant time going in, and that we needed to have some reimbursement for the consultant work that was happening. And Montecito and the city entered into a funding agreement and resumed negotiations. Again, in 2017, the negotiations were paused by Montecito as they went to look more comprehensively at what their alternatives were. And then in February 2018, we began negotiating again. And we authorized an amendment to the funding agreement for additional costs of the water supply agreement. That was executed in May of 18, and we are here in December with really pretty substantial progress and agreement on the key terms of the water supply agreement. I want to clarify that the water supply agreement will be an agreement between the two parties that has yet to be drafted. What we're talking about now is the fundamentals of what will go into that agreement. So the principles of the negotiation between the parties is that the city would own and operate the D-SAL plant and the conveyance pipeline that's necessary to get water from the D-SAL plant up to the South Coast Conduit and to Montecito. The water supply agreement will not grant ownership, but it will provide a secure source of supply that allows the city to be able to extend water as a water sales to Montecito. The terms of the agreement are a take-or-pay, meaning that if Montecito does not need the water or want the water, they still have an obligation to pay costs, and the costs are allocated on various different manners. The water pricing in the agreement would be set to reflect the cost of supplying that water. So although we're not having a joint plant operation, the pricing has really come out of the cost of developing the supply in order to allow us to supply water to Montecito. We have protected city water supplies, working hard to ensure that the water is in fact available to the Montecito Water District before we commit to supply them for 50 years. And then it includes some regional water management provisions. It allows some provisions during emergency situations. So the key terms are listed here, and I'm going to go through each of them. The term of the agreement is 50 years. This is the longest agreement that is allowed under the city's charter. Montecito wanted the longest possible agreement because they are concerned about their future water supplies. The base volume of water that the city would make available to the district would be 1,430 acre-feet per year. And then we've included a provision for take-if-offered water. So this is water that if it's surplus to the city's needs, we would let Montecito know, and they would have an obligation to take some or all of that water at the costs that reflect the cost of producing it. The source of water is at the city's discretion. This gives the city the opportunity to manage its water supply portfolio in the manner which best meets the city's needs. But D-SAL will always backstop the water supply it's necessary in order to have the underlying water available to offer in this contract. There are some important factors in here to prevent the city's other water supplies from being at risk if, for some reason, the D-SAL is unable to perform and backstop that water supply. They include major events that are affecting the D-SAL plant's production, such as force-mature events, earthquakes, tidal waves, other oceanographic events, such as a red tide or very high turbidity, or other things that make the water untreatable. And then operator uncontrollable events, which are already in our agreement with our contract operator, that say, give the operator certain conditions where they are relieved of their obligation to provide us with water. That relief would be also given under the terms of this agreement. Events affecting the conveyance infrastructure, if the conveyance infrastructure is unable to be used, then Montecito is excused from having to take the water and excludes from the payment of some of the costs of that water. And then in the event that there's a critical water emergency affecting one or both of the parties, we would work collaboratively to make sure that both parties have access to the basic water needs of the community, so that both parties are able to continue meeting the needs of their constituents and their residents. Talked about the D-SAL conveyance pipeline. This slide shows the route, the projected route of that pipeline. It is currently in design. The scope would be to take water from the D-SAL plant up to the Cater Clearwell. That's the point in, after the treatment process at Cater, where the water is held and it has certain disinfection timing there before it's distributed to the city and then sent down the South Coast Conduit to Montecito and Carpinteria. The very clever design of this pipeline in that it allows us to repurpose an existing pipeline and shorten the length of new pipeline that is needed to about three miles. That's the purple section on the map. The red section is the existing pipeline that we would rehabilitate and recondition to make sure it's in good shape to continue serving to take this water the rest of the way. You will note that the pipeline, the red section, goes right up past the Mission, a very sensitive area, so the fact that we can use existing infrastructure is really great in terms of avoiding both the inconvenience of tearing up city streets, but also the sensitive issues up in that very historic area. The projected cost for this pipeline is somewhere between $12 and $15 million at this point, but of course, it will depend on the cost of the bid. The cost components that were, have been developed to set the pricing term for the agreement include a capital charge that is proportionate to how much water supply each of us is seeking to have from the facility. So 1,430 for the district, and when the plant is expanded to 5,000, which it will need to be at some point, probably fairly near term, in order to provide the surplus supply for the district, then the city's portion would be the remainder, and it comes out to about a 29%, 61%, 71% split, excuse me, math there. The water supply development fee, which is basically a buy-in fee for the district, if you will, it compensates the city and city residents for past costs that the city has endured to keep the plant operational and to keep it active. There's an administrative fee. This is actually just reimbursement for actual expenses to administer the contract and manage the staff time, reimburse the staff time associated with that. The take-if-water, take-if-offered water, it reflects the capital and operating costs of the plant. And then we have secured $10 million in grant funding from the state, and we would share that proportionately between the two parties. Commencement of deliveries for the water supply agreement are contingent upon completion of the conveyance pipeline and expansion of the plant to 5,000 acre-feet, whichever those come later. However, if we decide to defer expansion for a short period of time, which we would only do if our other water supplies were suddenly very robust, we would commence deliveries on completion of the pipeline, which we expect to be at the end of 2020. For a funding overview, the conveyance pipeline for the city, our portion will come from water fund reserves above policy. A large portion of that will be coming from proceeds of that grant that we have secured. For the D-SAL expansion, we are today going to ask you for authorization to apply for a state revolving fund loan to finance the cost of that expansion. That's a very favorable term of interest. Our current one is 1.6% for interest. I don't think we'll get quite as favorable a term, as interest rates have risen a little bit, but we would expect it to be well below what we could get on the commercial market. That cost will largely, will completely be offset by Montecito's participation in funding that cost, so will not increase the city's investment or the city's expense for the capital component of the D-SAL plant. We will also continue to look for other grant application opportunities. There is still SB 1 money, and we'll continue to seek other opportunities for grant funding. We, as staff, are pleased about this agreement on several levels. The plant was originally conceived as a regional supply. I firmly believe that regional supply planning is an important element of our South Coast. We share our water supplies. We share the San Inez River. We have overlapping groundwater basins, and we share our community. You know, the line between Montecito and Santa Barbara is a political line only, and we've seen that so clearly in the recent history. So it's, for regional, good government reasons, it's a good project and good benefit for both of us, but it goes further than that. By having additional shared supplies for each of us, it increased the resiliency of both of us because it has an additional pooled water supply available to both communities. So that increases our overall reliability as an area. The economies of scale are available to both parties. The fixed costs, the participation in ongoing capital costs, as well as the lower cost of a higher level of production, will be shared by both parties, and our ratepayers will see the direct benefit of those shared costs. We have shared risk. In the event that something happens and the D-SAL plant needs major investment or major repairs, we have a shared risk with the district, and the district will participate in those costs. And then putting the water up at Cater and mixing it with our other supplies will improve the overall water quality for the city, all of the city's residents, as well as for the district and their residents, and fortunately for Carpinteria, also them. So the terms of the deal that we have worked very hard to try and negotiate and that we are bringing to you for input at this point in time represent equitable deal for both communities. They will offer relief to the city's ratepayers, and importantly, a reliable source of supply for both communities for 50 years. So the next steps for the water supply agreement will be to receive your input today and answer your questions. We'll come back to council, and Montecito will go to their board with a final term sheet in January. We will complete the water sales agreement and return for the council's approval as soon as we can get it done, which we will hope is the spring of 2019. As regard to the other items that we have today, we will ask you to, as part of your recommendations, to appoint someone to take Councilmember Hart's place on the ad hoc committee, as well as confirming that you want it to continue as an ad hoc committee for this ongoing negotiation. So the recommendations or your council report are here. You have just received an update on the status of the negotiations. And when you are ready, we will hope to have a recommendation to adopt the resolution to allow us to apply for the state revolving fund loan. Please understand that just gives us authorization to apply. It does not commit us to actually executing that loan, but it's a very lengthy process to get it complete, about a year, so we really need to get going on that. And then, of course, the recommendation for the ad hoc committee. So with that, before I move to questions, I'd like to invite Floyd Wicks from the Montecito Water Board to come to the podium and offer any remarks he may have.
Very good. Would you say his name again?
Floyd Wicks.
Oh, Wicks. That's easy. Welcome, sir.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff, I am honored to be here today to represent Montecito Water District. I've been on the board now for two years, and as it turns out, another board member and myself, we're now the senior board members on Montecito Water District. We have three brand-new members as of about a couple... We have three brand-new members as of about a couple of weeks ago, a month ago. So it's, um, I'm senior in other ways as well, but that's beside the point. What I would like to do is kind of give you just a brief history of how we got on the board, how I got on the board. And one of the key things was, uh, the, the district was looking for its own D-SAL plant to be built at the time. There was a proposal made to the district that was, uh, just a lot, a lot of history there that I really don't want to get into too much, but nonetheless, we saw a real need to get going in securing more water for the district, reliable water. And so looking at what the district's plan was, there frankly was no plan. Urban water management plan is required by the state of California to be submitted every five years. The district had submitted one, but the last one was 2005. So when we came on the board, there was no plan. We put a plan together, uh, with me today is Nick Turner, general manager of the district. And he, uh, we all worked very diligently to put a plan together. That plan included, um, a purchase of water from the city or from some, we didn't say from the city in our plan. We, we're trying to be politically correct, but, uh, so we, we had, I think, 1,250 acre feet proposed in our plan that was submitted to the state and now at 1,430 acre feet through the negotiations. And I might, I might add that Josh and Rebecca have done an outstanding job for the city. We really appreciate their efforts and it's been, um, it's been kind of a roller coaster ride. We backed away two or three times. I can't imagine what must be going through all of your minds now and why we did all that, but nonetheless, we're still here. Um, I won't offer reasons for that either, but, and we really appreciate your staff. They've been very patient with us and the, the agreement, the terms that we have arrived at, we believe as well, are very fair to both parties, benefits to both parties. And frankly, the city's been our partner for decades through Cater. And what Cater represents to me at least is, is a water supply slash treatment agreement. And this effectively is an extension of that agreement. Uh, we're not treating Kachuma water, we're treating the largest reservoir in the world from namely Pacific Ocean water and it's a treatment agreement. And so some of that water might not come from the plant, it'll be a mixture, but nonetheless, it's going to represent, the 1,430 acre feet represents about almost 40% of our entire supply. And looking back again to the urban water plan we put together and filed with the state, one of the objectives of that plan by 2025, we said we're going to have 85% of our water delivered to customers to be reliable. This gets us a long way toward that 85% number. We're going to add, uh, recycled water to that plan as well as, and we also have invested in a water bank in the central part of the state, Central Valley. So all of these, all the above will lead us to a 2025 objective of having 85% of our water supply being 100% reliable, a far cry from where we are today. So we really appreciate your efforts as well as staff and thank you both very much. Looking forward to signing that agreement. And 50 years from now, possibly an extension, I'll sign that as well. Thanks very much.
Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Wicks while he's up there? No, any questions for staff before we, we have one, um, public comment speaker. Mr. Rouse, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I'd like to, you know, thank Montecito for being back at the table and I'm sure that regionally, um, taking all, taking as much pressure off our groundwater tables as possible is, is, is key because that can be damaging in the long run. Uh, I was curious, Ms. Bjork, about the slide showing the pipeline going up to Cater and the part that is already, uh, existing. And in the current configuration, is that, yeah, the red pipe up there, is that actually flowing downhill or is that being pumped up at the current time?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, that is currently flowing downhill. It's a transmission main. We have done extensive testing to make sure that we can operate our system effectively without that main flowing downhill. Um, so yes, it will be repurposed and the direction will be changed.
Reverse the flow.
That's correct.
And so we'll have, and in that, in that design between the two, the new and the old, how many pumping stations will need to be added to make that work?
There is a current pumping station at the D-SAL plant and that will remain. It will be upsized and that will allow the pumping from the plant up to Cater.
All the way up to Cater from that one pump?
Yes.
It's a heck of a pump. All right, very good. Yeah, that's pretty incredible. And, uh, in terms of the retrofitting of the existing pipe, is there going to have to be much of that? Or is that unknown as of right now?
You know, we've done some analysis of that and it's, it's somewhat known, somewhat unknown. I think there, there are two parts to it. We will continue to be partners in that, in that pipe with Montecito. We, um, will try and get the remaining life out of that pipe before it needs to be retrofitted. Um, so yes, there will be retrofitting needed. Will it be needed immediately? Not as clear.
I'd say because it is going through a pretty historically sensitive area so that you wouldn't want it to fail.
Yeah, and one of the advantages of, of deferring that is that technology continues to evolve, uh, in the area of underground pipe rehabilitation and we're getting more and more trenchless technologies available and certainly being able to do a remote lining or a pipe bursting and not have to do a dig would certainly be in everyone's interest. Um, and so allowing technology to continue until such time as we can't wait any longer will give us our best options.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? We'll go to public comment, but I did want to compliment you on a, on a well-written report. The first time I read it, I was tired and I just went right through it, so well, well done. You answered all my questions. So, Mr. Walker?
A real easy one. Good afternoon, once again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Like I said before, I voted for the regional D-SAL plant to fall 1990 when there was six months of water left in Lake Kachuma. And, you know, I've been drinking it for the last year and still got the same pipes, no problems with leaks and, uh, you know, I'm still here. So it's, it's been very good. It's good to see General Manager Nick Turner and Mr. Floyd Wicks from the MWD Board here. And it'd be good to see this, uh, agreement come to fruition. Like I said before, I voted for it as a regional plant. You never know. I had a general engineering contractor who's worked a lot for the Forest Service and Calfire working on the duplexes, his family owns, uh, catty corner across the street from me. And he said, you know, Phil, California has three seasons, flood, fire and earthquake. So if the Teca Lodi is compromised and/or the regional, uh, the coastal branch of the state water aqueduct and/or the California water aqueduct, or even the levees that are essential to getting this fresh water down here, here. Uh, you know, they were old when I was a kid up there in the 50s, up in that area. So you just never know and that's the best thing, the ace in the hole is that regional water plant, uh, from like Mr. Wick said, the biggest reservoir in the world. And, uh, it'd be good to see a quick fruition to the agreement and like I said before, you never know when the Glade Water District will be knocking on the door too. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Walker. Uh, Mr. Hart and then Ms. Sneddon and then Mr. Friedman.
Well, I just want to thank, uh, Board Member Wicks and Mr. Turner for being here today. This has been a long path to get to this place, but I think the, um, the strength of this agreement is the fact that it benefits both parties. It's been very carefully negotiated and there's been a lot of give and take in that process. But when you think about the economies of scale that are involved in this and that the reduction in the price for both entities, um, the increased resiliency and the shared risk, this is really makes sense for the reasons that, um, Ms. Bjork said, that, um, working regionally is the better approach for water supplies. Mr. Walker said it really clearly, you know, our, we're vulnerable and at risk from a natural disaster, from the supplies around the other side of the mountains. So having robust, um, independent, reliable water supply in this side of the mountains is just essentially, essential for disaster planning and preparation. And this agreement moves us closer to that, having the pipeline that, um, puts the water up at Cater from the D-SAL plant directly, improves water quality for all city residents. Um, right now, folks who are in the lower parts of town are getting D-SAL water and folks in other parts of town aren't. And, um, there's a dramatic difference in the quality of the water that's coming out of the D-SAL plant, so we want everybody to take advantage of that. And, um, I think this is a, a great moment of incredible cooperation between both agencies that should be celebrated.
Very good. Ms. Sneddon.
I'd like to echo the sentiments, the D-SAL ad hoc committee, we've gone back and forth with terms and I think, um, each had to, to adjust a little bit and I feel very comfortable with the, with the terms that we've come to, um, especially in light of the increased resiliency for both cities, which is, um, increasingly, we're aware of how much we need that and, uh, an increased water supply and a better water supply helps us as well and, and our neighbors. Um, an example of regional cooperation, it, it benefits both parties. Um, Cater Water Treatment Plant is an example of that, as you mentioned, and, um, I want to thank you for mentioning that because that is an example that benefits both communities and has been a successful regional cooperation, um, and brings costs down for all of us. And I just, um, wholeheartedly support this report and is, is it time to make a motion or?
Well, I did have a question. Um, I assumed we would put a new person on the ad hoc committee and then Ms. Bjork, you said, should we continue with the ad hoc committee? Do you have a recommendation?
Madam Mayor, we, we would, and as staff, we would appreciate a continuation of the ad hoc committee. It's been a useful sounding board and, uh, although we'll be moving into the final phase of this negotiation, there may be questions or touchpoints that come up during the drafting of the agreement that would be helpful as well.
And, uh, Madam Mayor, the, the Brown Act offers exceptions to privately discuss real estate negotiations. Some people think water is real estate. It's safer to have an ad hoc committee to handle the negotiations than try and do it in closed session.
Okay. Well, very good. You're already on the committee along with Councilmember Dominguez. Uh, Councilmember Friedman expressed an interest in being on it. Anyone else have an interest? You don't have any competition then? So if you're making a motion, perhaps you can include Mr. Friedman as the new member of the ad hoc committee. Ms. Sneddon.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the staff recommendation and to nominate Councilmember Friedman to replace Councilmember Hart on the ad hoc committee.
Okay, very good. And there was a second from Councilmember Hart, so we're moving the loan forward and having, uh, Councilmember Friedman, uh, join the committee. Any other discussion? I'll be voting for that motion myself. Uh, thanks. If it rains again, please don't, don't leave us. Ms., Mr. Friedman.
I just want to add, I appreciate Mr. Wicks and Mr. Turner coming out, your comments. Mr. Wick, we're very informative just on the importance of this and, um, I think last year in particular, but over decades, we've shown that we're one community, Santa Barbara and Montecito. And I'd also like to thank my fellow council members who were on, uh, before, um, Mr. Gutierrez, Ms. Sneddon and I came on because you're the ones who made the difficult decision to restart it and there were things that didn't go as planned and you continued to stay with it. And we've seen the benefits of that today, so that I, I want to express my appreciation to the council members who, um, who stuck with it when times were tough.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez, are you there? Comments?
Yes, I wanted to express my concerns. I had some questions and a request for a study or data and it was never produced. And my concern is not as much with the Montecito Water District Agreement. I think that, uh, the agreement as it's been moving along so far is, is fair and reasonable and I really am, uh, appreciating the regional cooperation. My concern is with the city's water supply and what we've studied and what we haven't studied and this moving forward without looking at recycling water, what our needs might be there. This was originally an emergency facility and I think we needed to study this closer to determine how we want to move forward into the future and we haven't done that. So those are my concerns moving forward.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hagmark or Ms. Bjork, if you're going to respond, but I would ask our city TV crew to turn up the volume on, uh, Mr. Dominguez's, uh, speaker. I heard it, but it was lighter than, than last week, so go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the, um, the resiliency of the city's water supply has been staff's foremost concern in negotiating this agreement, both looking to our needs for recycled water and our ultimate needs for water supply. Uh, we've included our, our water supply manager, who, um, is very skilled in water supply planning, in all of our conversations and that has been informative. And staff are, are confident that, um, there is adequate water supply availability between the D-SAL plant, our existing supplies and the potential of future supplies, uh, in the form of additional recycled water, uh, probably as a, a direct potable reuse, uh, to meet city needs. Uh, just between recycled water and the D-SAL alone, when, when recycled water technology is there, we believe we could make water, a water supply amount equal to the amount of water that Santa Barbara is consuming today. And I do want to mention that we continue with changes in the plumbing code and changes in behaviors to see a decreasing use, uh, on the part of our residents and businesses. So, um, we feel that this is a prudent way to plan for our water supplies and, um, hope that that answers that question.
Mr. Dominguez?
It doesn't, it does not answer the question to the extent we haven't studied it to the detail and level of specificity that I'd like to see. I think what we have is a back-of-the-envelope measurement and we haven't measured the supply and demand to the extent that I'd like to see before we invest the amount of money we're talking about here. I think, given the amount of money we're investing, and if you'd like to give us what you think the total amount would be, that would be helpful. Um, it would make sense to either internally do more of a study and present it to the city council and the city, or hire a consultant to do that. But we haven't done either of those things, so that's my concern.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, um, without having the bid for the actual expansion of the plant, we are doing it based on preliminary estimates, but ultimately, uh, we've been careful to make sure that the entering into this contract is an opportunity to provide rate relief for our, our residents rather than adding cost. So we do not think, although there will be additional expenditures here, Montecito's participation in the project will cover those additional expenditures necessary to enter into this agreement. With regard to the water supply, with regard to the water supply planning, we, um, have, in 2011, we did a long-term water supply update. It was supposed to last until 2030 and we did it in, in coordination with the general plan. It, it took us three, four years to complete that work. It was extensive work. It probably cost us somewhere in the range of half a million dollars with assistance of consultants. Um, and that doesn't include the staff time we put into it. We have every plan to re-initiate that. The basis for water supply planning is generally water supply experience during the drought of record. We are currently in the drought of record, um, and, and until we get through this drought, uh, we, we would probably be doing an iterative effort on that, not to mention that at this point in time, um, staff are busy trying to manage our water supplies during the drought, so we would need additional resources in that area as well. So trying to keep our staff from complete burnout, um, as well as do prudent use of our, our resources. We are waiting to get through this water, this, this drought in order to do that next iteration of water supply planning. That does do an exhaustive look at projected demand, projective supplies. Of course, we did do that for our various supplies in 2011. Uh, the projected demand probably won't change substantially because that was pretty up-to-date and exhaustive. Uh, the projected supplies is the piece that will change and that's the piece that we will need to relook at. And again, I, I wouldn't recommend at this time going forward with that exhaustive study until we have a better baseline to start from.
So my, my response to that is it's, it's not a choice of doing nothing in an exhaustive study. I think there are some intermediary tools we could utilize to give more light to the subject. And it's not just the cost in terms of the, the millions of dollars and it looks like it'll be over 20 million dollars to expand the D-SAL plant. be over $20 million to expand the D-SAL plant and some $15 to $20 million to do constructive work on pipes and plants. And all of the dismantling of streets and the construction work that we're going to subject our residents to has a lot of costs, both financial, direct economic costs and the inconvenience costs. So these are extreme costs that I think would warrant a study of some type, if not a half million dollar study in the use of some staff, well, maybe a $100,000 study in some example. So that's my reply to what you just said, and I'm happy to just let it rest on that. I know my colleagues were of a different mind, and I respect their opinion, but I just wanted to make my concerns known.
We thank you for your comments, Mr. Dominguez, and we'll take a roll call vote. And if you don't vote for it, we respect that, too.
This is a motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Hart, to approve the staff recommendation and to nominate Councilmember Friedman to replace outgoing Councilmember Hart on the Montecito Water District Desalination Ad hoc Committee. Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hart.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rose.
Aye.
And Mayor Murillo.
Aye.
Sounded unanimous?
Motion carries unanimously.
Very good. Thank you, staff, for all your hard work. Representatives of the Montecito Water District, thank you so much for being here today. We'll close this item and go on to the next one. We'll need a couple of minutes to set up our binders, but go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Item number 29, appointments to city advisory groups.
We really appreciate everyone who has applied, and not everyone will get appointed. And I tell people, keep trying if you don't get selected the first time. So we need to, this will take a little bit longer because we have someone coming over the speakers. Everyone be sure and have your microphone on so that our comments can be recorded. We're getting some information from the public. We'll hand those out. And the clerks are here, all ready to, all ready to go. But we have public comment, which I think we should take first because this isn't a regular item where we have staff presentation and questions. So Anna Marie Gott, you'll have five minutes, Mr. Wolford. Oh, he left. So you have three minutes, Ms., yeah. The person has to be in the room. Thank you.
I don't know why he left. Okay, so as you are quite aware, I've presented you with some information regarding our city charter and the issues with ABR and HLC. I would like to direct you to the information on the board. Mr. Wolford is back in the room.
Go ahead, please.
If you take a look at 2018, Mr. Richard Sixx was actually elected to become a licensed architect, elected as a member that either is a licensed architect or at public at large. You actually chose him to represent public at large, not as a licensed architect. At the time, the only licensed architect that was on the ABR was Mr. Howard Wistha. Everyone else who was actually on the board was nominated and appointed as something else, though there were multiple licensed architects. The city charter requires only that there are two licensed architects for the ABR and the HLC. If you take a look at the bottom, you will see that Ms. Tripp was actually nominated and elected as a qualified elector of the city. She is actually being replaced today, as is a vacant seat. That vacant seat says that it was an architect. However, the only vacant seat was from Kirk Gredin, who was elected as a qualified elector. All I am asking is that the city council follow the rules of the charter. You can certainly have a preference, that you want to have three architects always on a board, to make sure that you have at least two in case someone resigns. But the information that you have regarding the appointments today for the HLC and the ABR are stating that you must actually require to be voted on and have a licensed architect for the ABR and two for the HLC. But that's simply not the case. The voters, when they voted for the charter, voted on the charter, not a policy of the city. And in both cases, you have actually satisfied the requirements for architects on both boards. There is no requirement right now that you choose an architect, though you may decide to choose one. That is simply all I am asking that the city council actually act on today. I also provided you with a lot of information after Ms. Gorman actually sent me an email today regarding the appointments that had happened in 2015, 2016, and 2017. All of that documents everything that I provided over the weekend, and it just reiterates that there, yes, has been a mistake. I'm just asking that you correct that mistake, and you can do it one of two ways. You can choose to go ahead and vote and have someone come back with a reconsideration for ABR or HLC if you were required to choose an architect, and we can just redo this vote in January. Or you can choose to have an emergency agendized item, which is to change the requirements for the item. You just need a two-thirds vote to go ahead and make that change. I'm just asking, as I said earlier, for you to follow the rules. Don't make it onerous. Go ahead and change the ABR to just say the person may be a licensed architect, that it is not required. And for the HLC, that you may choose licensed architects, and that that is not required. Thank you very much.
Francisco Chacon. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good afternoon. My name is Francisco Chacon. I live out by Patterson. Last time I was up there, I was in a 30-year pin because I worked for the fire department. So it's been a while. I'm here today because there will possibly be an airport commissioner appointed today. I don't know probably, I don't know who it's going to be. And I would like to implore the councilmembers to consider appointing commissioners that will listen and effectively deal with the new increased noise issues and increased frequency of low flyovers over the area that I live in, out there by Patterson. We need to get representation on the airport commission to keep our noise and low flights concerns dealt with or even heard and possibly remedied so that the city airport can be considered a good neighbor. None of the current commissioners or city airport employees, for example, the interim airport director and the airport ops employee in charge of the airport noise, have any idea the impact of the increased flights and low flyovers that are affecting our environment. I think Councilmember Hart probably has more time out there and has witnessed and heard more airport, low flyovers and noise. I'm sure when I was talking to him out there, if there would have been a jet come over, I wouldn't have been able to talk to him. And this isn't something that's always been. It's an increase. It's a new thing. They have defaulted to the profiles, the sound profiles provided by the manufacturers of these jets. And they're saying, okay, these are the ones that can fly in. And we all know that manufacturers' data and profiles are truthful. Look at VW. Their emissions profile scandals resulted in fines and lawsuits. So we got to keep track of what these people are saying, you know, what they're doing and what's actually happening out there. They have no real-time data of the increased noise and frequency of flights, as was previously available with the strategically placed microphones that could measure sound levels. These things are still in place. They're still there. There's one across the street from my house. They claim that technology is outdated and no longer supported. Yet, in all their representations and future budget proposals, which I've sat through some of the commission meetings out there, there are no funds allocated to address this issue. It's like, well, if we don't address it, it doesn't happen.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Your time's up. If you just have one more sentence to wrap up your thought.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to say again, we need to get representation on the airport commission to keep our noise and low flight concerns dealt with or even heard and possibly remedied so that the city airport can be considered a good neighbor. Thank you.
Thanks so much. That closes public comment. Ms. Sneddon.
I just, is this an appropriate time to ask a question about the Architectural Border Review? Are lists on there?
We should ask it now because we're going to start appointing people. Yeah.
Okay, so on the agenda item that we had previously, Leon Olson was listed under Licensed Architect, and on today's list, he's listed under Public at Large. And I was just wondering which column we can consider him in.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, he can be appointed to either the professional qualifications or the public at large category.
But not the licensed.
But not licensed architect.
So he's originally listed as?
Correct. And then we determined that he was not a licensed architect, but he could be appointed in either of those other two categories.
Okay. And then could, I am confused genuinely about Ms. Gott's statements about Mr. Sixx and his appointment to which position and which ones we're filling. Are we switching the designation of people who are already seated, or are they staying in the positions they were appointed to?
Ms. Gorman.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon, essentially, we are not moving any of the previously appointed advisory group members from terms to which they are seated. So the open positions today are the open positions that council would fill today.
And just one more question about that. If there's only one applicant in a category, are we required to fill it with that applicant?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody turn your mics on, and Councilmember Dominguez will be doing, well, we do it all roll call anyway. So we'll start with the Access Advisory Committee. Do I have any nominations?
Do we just say them?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I nominate Susan Tejeda and Janice Rodriguez.
Would anyone, that's it. Okay, so let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on those two names.
So nomination by Councilmember Sneddon for Ms. Tejeda and Ms. Rodriguez for Access Advisory Committee.
And so say the two that you support.
Yes. So each councilmember, when I call your names, say the proposed appointees that you support. Councilmember Dominguez.
I support the two nominated.
Councilmember Friedman.
I support both.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
I support both.
Councilmember Hart.
Tejeda and Rodriguez.
Mayor Potem Rose.
Tejeda Rodriguez.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Tejeda and Rodriguez.
And Mayor Murillo.
Tejeda Rodriguez.
Okay, Ms. Tejeda and Ms. Rodriguez are appointed.
Very good. We'll move to Airport Commission. Do we have nominations?
I'd like to nominate Paul Bowen, Greg Wilson, and Carol Goodman.
I'd like to nominate Miller, Maya.
What was that name?
Miller and Maya, Levi Maya.
And I'd like to nominate Dennis Huffton.
So pick three of those names nominated.
Councilmember Friedman.
Dennis Huffton, Levi Maya, and Paul Bowen was.
Yeah.
Or Bruce Miller.
You get to choose three.
I know, but which ones were, there was one I, who was nominated?
The nominated.
Maya and Miller were nominated as well.
Okay, so Maya, Miller, Huffton, and Bowen.
You get three.
Three, sorry, yeah, three. So Huffton, Bowen, and Maya.
If I could just clarify that it got a little confusing, just so we're all working on the same page. The nominations that you can choose from are Huffton, Greg Wilson, Paul Bowen, Levi Maya, Bruce Miller, and Carol Goodman. And you vote for three.
Thank you.
Is it?
Madam Clerk.
Is it too late to make a nomination?
No. We've nominated those names that Mr. Casey just said, so pick three out of those. Thanks.
Here's another.
Madam Mayor, I think that Councilmember Gutierrez can offer names and nomination as well.
Oh.
That's, I believe that's his inquiry.
Did you want, did you want to nominate someone? But we already started the voting?
I'm okay with it, yeah.
Okay.
And Councilmember Gutierrez, you are next.
I'll nominate Dennis Huffman, Levi Maya, and Carol Goodman.
Councilmember Hart.
Huffton, Bowen, and Goodman.
Mayor Potem Rose.
Bowen, Maya, Miller.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Wilson, Bowen, Goodman.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Carol Goodman, Paul Bowen, and Greg Wilson.
And Mayor Murillo.
Huffton, Bowen, Goodman.
I have a count, but I don't want to get ahead of the clerks. Yeah. Mr. Dominguez, the clerks are doing the tabulation. Mr. Dominguez, the clerks are doing the tabulation.
We have, I'll just read the number of votes per nominee here. Houghton for four votes, Wilson for two, Bowen six, Maya three, Miller one, and Goodman five.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to the Architectural Board of Review. Nominations, please.
I'd like to nominate Pat Salee and Katie Kline, and none for the Licensed Architect.
We need one from the bottom and one from the?
I'm sorry. Pat Salee.
So Insoa and Salee.
Not Insoa. I would like to leave that one blank.
Oh, just, okay. So, okay.
I'd like to nominate Leon Olson.
I'll nominate Insoa.
I'll nominate Katie Kline.
And I'll nominate Karnes.
Has Olson been nominated?
Mr. Olson's been nominated. Yeah. So Mr. Casey, do you have Salee, Olson, Insoa, Kline, and Karnes nominated? We're ready to take a vote.
Okay. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Insoa and Kline.
Councilmember Hart?
Insoa and Karnes.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Insoa, Olson.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Salee.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Salee and Insoa.
Councilmember Friedman?
Insoa, Olson.
Mayor Maria?
Insoa, Karnes. So it looks like we have Insoa for sure. And then we'll need to make another round of votes. Mr. Casey, is that how it works? Yeah. So nominated still Karnes, Salee, Olson, and Kline. Vote for one. Whenever you're ready, Madam Clerk.
This is for the ABR choices between Olson, Kline, Karnes, and Salee. Councilmember Hart? Mayor Potem Rouse?
Olson.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Salee.
Councilmember Dominguez? Councilmember Friedman?
Olson.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Olson.
Mayor Maria? Mr. Olson is appointed with four votes.
Very good. Ready to move on?
And just to read into the record, Ivan Insoa appointed.
Very good. Building and Fire Code, sorry, Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Nominate Jeff Hornbuckle.
Any other nominations? Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Hornbuckle by acclamation?
So move, second?
Rouse, Hart, take a roll call, please.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hart?
Aye.
Mayor Maria?
Aye. It's unanimous, I think?
Yes, that is unanimous, appointing Mr. Hornbuckle to the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Okay. We'll skip Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens. Civil Service Commission. Any nominations?
Nominate Robert Burke.
We'll take a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedman?
No.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
No.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Aye.
Mayor Maria?
No. Carries four to three?
That carries with four to three.
We'll move on to Community Development and Human Services Committee if the clerk is ready.
I am.
I would like to nominate Alejandro Gutierrez.
I'm sorry?
I would like to nominate Alejandro Gutierrez.
Very good. Do I have a motion to accept her by acclamation? From Friedman?
Second.
Seconded by Sneddon. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, this is to appoint Alejandro Gutierrez by acclamation. Councilmember Dominguez? Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Maria? She's appointed unanimously.
Very good. We'll move on to Community Events and Festivals Committee.
I'd like to nominate Roger Perry and Ryan Howe.
Very good. We'll take a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember, this is to nominate Roger Perry and Ryan Howe to the Community Events and Festivals Committee. Councilmember Friedman?
Perry and Howe.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Perry and Howe.
Councilmember Hart?
Perry and Howe.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Perry and Howe.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Perry and Howe.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Perry, Howe.
And Mayor Maria?
Perry, Howe.
Mr. Perry and Mr. Howe are appointed.
Okay. Moving on to our Creaks Committee. If you're ready, Madam Clerk, I'll entertain nominations.
Owens, Gaskin, Rizzo, Centino.
Very good. We'll take a roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor Maria, Councilmember Sneddon, could you repeat your nomination, please?
Penny Owens? Lori Gaskin, and Anna Rosa Rizzo Centino.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Gutierrez?
I nominate Owens, Gaskin, and Centino.
Councilmember Hart?
Owens, Gaskin, Rizzo, Centino.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Owens, Gaskin, Rizzo, Centino.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Owens, Gaskin, Rizzo, Centino.
Councilmember Dominguez?
All three.
Councilmember Friedman?
Owens, Gaskin, Rizzo, Centino.
Okay. Mayor Maria?
Owens, Gaskin, Rizzo, Centino.
Okay. So Ms. Owens, Ms. Gaskin, and Ms. Rizzo Centino are appointed to the Creaks Advisory Committee.
Very good. Moving on to the Fire and Police Commission. Nominations, please.
Janine Daniel and Lizzie Rodriguez.
Any other nominations? Okay. Vote for two. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hart?
Daniel Rodriguez.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Daniel Rodriguez.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Daniel Rodriguez.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Daniel Rodriguez.
Councilmember Friedman?
Daniel Rodriguez.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Daniel Rodriguez.
And Mayor Maria?
Daniel Rodriguez.
Ms. Daniel and Ms. Rodriguez are appointed to the Fire and Police Commission.
We'll move on to the Harbor Commission, please.
I'll nominate Elizabeth Kramer.
Any other nominations?
Nelson.
Okay. So it's choose one out of the two nominees, Nelson or Kramer. We'll take a roll call.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Kramer.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Kramer.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Kramer.
Councilmember Friedman?
Kramer.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Kramer.
Councilmember Hart?
Nelson.
Mayor Maria? And Ms. Kramer is appointed four to two. No, it was Councilmember Hart and Mayor Maria. Very good. Five to two, sorry. Five to two.
Next is our Historic Landmarks Commission. So there's four vacancies, two from the Public at Large, please, and two from the Licensed Architects. Do I have nominations? Well, I will nominate Edmonds and Olson for the first category, and then Vena and Nemec for the second. Any other nominations?
Barnwell.
What was that?
Barnwell.
Barnwell, okay.
And Madam Mayor, if I may, Mr. Nemec actually is not a Licensed Landscape Architect, so he is now in the Public at Large category. That was a, hmm. Last minute discovery.
Then I will nominate him for the Public at Large and remove my nomination of Olson. And I forgot, he was already appointed to the other Design Review Board. So, Mr. Nemec, move up here. So Vena, so I would nominate Vena and Noon, I think that's how he pronounced his name when he came to the lectern. So any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Robert Uli, and we nominated Nemec already, correct? So just want to add Uli.
For the Public at Large category up top.
Yeah. And I want to add Robert Uli for the Licensed Architects.
Very good.
I would also like to add Lavoy to the Architect.
Okay. So Mr. Casey, for the top category, Public at Large, we have Barnwell, Edmonds, Nemec. And then for Licensed Architect, Vena, Noon, Uli, and Lavoy.
I'm sorry, did no one nominate Orias?
No, ma'am.
Oh, I'd like to nominate Orias.
For the Public at Large. So we'll add Judy Orias to the Public at Large. So pick two from Public at Large and two from Licensed Architects if we're ready. Let's do this. Okay.
Councilmember Sneddon?
I'm sorry, I'm thrown off that Olson moved in the column here. So we have, it's pick two. I'll pick Orias and Olson, and Uli and Lavoy.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Orias, Olson, Lavoy, and Uli.
Councilmember Friedman?
Nemec, Edmonds, and Vena, and Uli.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Olson, Nemec, Vena, and Uli.
Councilmember Hart?
Edmonds, Nemec, Vena, and Uli.
Vena and Uli?
Councilmember Rouse?
Barnwell, Orias, Vena, and Uli.
I'm sorry, Orias, Vena, and Uli?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And Mayor Maria?
We're getting it right.
Okay. We have, for the Public at Large position, Mr. Nemec with four, and no one else with four, Mr. Barnwell with one, Ms. Edmonds with three, Ms. Orias with three, and Mr. Olson with three. And for Licensed Architects, we have Mr. Uli with seven and Mr. Vena with five. So those are those two positions, and then Mr. Lavoy had two. So.
Well, let me ask a question. Mr. Casey, Mr. Olson is already appointed to the Architectural Board of Review. Have we ever had someone serve on both the ABR and the HLC at the same time? I would let my colleagues stew on that a minute. What do you say?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, so I have that you have your two candidates chosen under the Licensed Architects with Mr. Uli and Mr. Vena.
That's right.
You have one Public at Large chosen with Mr. Nemec with four votes. So you still need to choose one more. I think you're right, it's unusual to have one member serve both on ABR and HLC. That's a lot to ask from two very busy committees.
Okay. So the remaining nominees are Barnwell, Edmonds, and Orias. Choose one, and we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Orias.
Councilmember Friedman?
Stick with Edmonds.
Councilmember Gutierrez? Councilmember Hart?
Excuse me, Edmonds.
Mayor Potem Rouse?
Edmonds.
Councilmember Sneddon? Mayor Maria? And that is six votes in favor of Ms. Edmonds, one vote in favor of Ms. Orias. So Ms. Edmonds? And that is six votes in favor of Ms. Edmonds, one vote in favor of Ms. Orias. So Ms. Edmonds appointed.
Congratulations to those folks. It's a lot of hard work. They might regret signing up. So we'll move on to the library board, please.
Nominate Tomlinson.
Any other nominations? Would you like to move him by acclamation, Mr. Rouse?
Sure, second.
And a second from Mr. Hart. Take a roll call, please. For Mr. Tomlinson.
This is for library board for Mr. Tomlinson. Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, this is a motion by Rouse, seconded by Hart. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yep.
And Mayor Maria?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And that is Mr. Tomlinson appointed unanimously to the library board.
Moving on to the living wage advisory committee.
I'll nominate Anna Kacotovic.
Very good.
Move by acclamation?
Second.
Take a roll call vote. She's done a great job for the committee.
This is for the living wage advisory committee. Ms. Kacotovic nominated by Mr. Friedman, motion by Rouse, seconded by Hart to move her nomination by acclamation. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Yep.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Mayor Maria?
Aye.
And Ms. Kacotovic is appointed to the living wage advisory committee.
We don't have nominees for the Measure P Committee or the mosquito and vector management district board. For the neighborhood advisory council, nominations, please.
Leiden and Mahoney.
Very good.
Move by acclamation?
Second.
That was Hart. Rouse?
Okay, we have motion by Councilmember Sneddon to appoint Ms. Mahoney and Ms. Leiden to the neighborhood advisory council. Motion by Councilmember Hart, seconded by Mayor Pretam Rouse, to move those nominations by acclamation. Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez? Councilmember Dominguez?
Yep.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Mayor Maria?
Aye.
And Ms. Mahoney and Ms. Leiden are appointed to the neighborhood advisory council.
Okay, so moving on to the parks and recreation commission, I noted that Cory Baker had applied for parks and recreation as well as the rental housing mediation board, and I think she, he, he could do both. The rental housing mediation board meets quarterly, and if they don't have a mediation schedule, so they skip it. So I don't think it's too much work. So, but that said, I'll entertain nominations.
Longstreet?
Longstreet and Baker.
Very good. Let's take a roll call vote on those two names, please.
Okay, this is for Parks and Recreation Commission, nomination by Rouse of Longstreet, nomination by Councilmember Sneddon of Longstreet and Baker. Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Longstreet, Baker.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Longstreet and Baker.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Longstreet and Baker.
Councilmember Friedman?
Longstreet, Baker.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Longstreet and Baker.
Councilmember Hart?
Longstreet, Baker.
And Mayor Maria?
Longstreet, Baker.
And Ms. Longstreet and Mr. Baker are all appointed unanimously to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Good. Moving on to planning commission, if you're ready, Ms. Clerk?
Nominate Higgins.
Higgins?
Nominate Jamie.
So Dufek and Higgins, both nominated. We get to pick one, there's one vacancy. So please call the roll.
Okay, this is for planning commission, one position. Councilmember Rouse nominated Mr. Higgins, Councilmember Friedman nominated...
Mr. Gutierrez nominated Ms. Dufek.
And Councilmember Gutierrez nominated Ms. Dufek. Okay, Councilmember Sneddon?
Higgins.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Higgins.
Councilmember Friedman?
Higgins.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Dufek.
Councilmember Hart?
Higgins.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Higgins.
Mayor Maria?
Higgins.
And Mr. Higgins is appointed, all in favor, except for Councilmember Gutierrez for Ms. Dufek.
Okay, very good. He wants more work, Mr. Higgins, congratulations. So the rental housing mediation board, I'll entertain nominations, please.
Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Olmstead, Eastman, Roberson?
I'll nominate Robert Burke.
You can only choose one homeowner?
Oh, you're right, okay.
So Wallenberg or Olmstead, which one, Mr. Hart?
Wallenberg.
Okay. Ann Roberson?
Yes.
Okay. Wait, so Eastman and Roberson, you said. Okay. Mr. Friedman?
Robert Burke.
I nominate Baker.
I apologize, I've lost track. Can I, do I just say my list, or should I? Okay, I'll just say my list.
The nominations we have so far, Baker, Burke, Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Eastman, and Roberson, or Roberson, she says it, Roberson.
Okay.
You're good?
Yes.
Okay, those are the nominees, and we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Sorry? Councilmember Dominguez?
Baker, Burke, Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Eastman, Roberson.
Councilmember Friedman?
Baker, Burke, Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Eastman, Roberson.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Baker, Burke, Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Eastman, and Roberson.
Councilmember Hart?
Baker, Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Eastman, and Roberson.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Baker, Burke, Wallenberg, Eastman, Roberson.
Again, what?
Baker, Burke, Wallenberg, Eastman, Roberson.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Baker, Burke, Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Eastman, Roberson.
And Mayor Maria?
Baker, Gutierrez, Wallenberg, Eastman, Roberson.
Okay, within the tenant category, we have Cory Baker with seven, Rigoberto Gutierrez with six, and Robert Burke with five. All three of them have four greater. Homeowner, unanimous seven for Wallenberg. Landlord, unanimous seven votes each for Janet Eastman and Michelle Roberson.
Very good. The Santa Barbara Youth Council, and I'll remind our council that the youth council itself makes recommendations for its own board. They've recommended the three names listed. Entertain a nomination, please.
Palmer and Peña, Brofel, and Minor.
Okay. We'll take a vote on that.
Councilmember Friedman?
All three.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
All three.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes, all three.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Yeah, move this slate.
Councilmember Sneddon?
All three.
Councilmember Dominguez?
All three.
And Mayor Maria?
All three.
Very good.
Marco Antonio, Palmer and Peña, Sean Brofel, and Julia Marie Minor are all appointed to the youth council.
Okay, and we'll move on to the sign committee. I'll nominate Sorgman, he's a great resource for us. Very good. Can we vote on that, please?
Yes, this is for the nomination of Ken Sorgman to the sign committee. Councilmember Gutierrez?
Sorgman, yes.
Councilmember Hart?
Sorgman.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Sorgman.
Councilmember Sneddon?
I'm sorry, can I ask a question? Lawrence Babakikian was on our list and interviewed, but isn't on...
Ms. Gorman?
And, and it was subsequently determined that this gentleman was not qualified for this position because he is a county resident as opposed to city, and the one county position is currently seated.
Sorgman?
Councilmember Dominguez?
Sorgman.
Councilmember Friedman?
Sorgman.
Mayor Maria?
Sorgman.
Mr. Sorgman is appointed unanimously to the sign committee.
We're almost done. Sister Cities Board.
Pat Finley Fallon.
Very good. Let's vote on Ms. Fallon's nomination, please.
Pat Finley Fallon for Sister Cities Board. Councilmember Hart?
Fallon.
Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Fallon.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Fallon.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Fallon.
Councilmember Friedman?
Fallon.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Fallon.
Mayor Maria?
Fallon.
Very good.
Ms. Fallon is appointed to the Sister Cities Board.
And the last one is the transportation and circulation committee. Is that everybody's last one? I'm not missing anything, okay. So we'll take nominations for the transportation and circulation committee. There's four vacancies, please.
I'll nominate Blackerby, Rodriguez, Horn, and Sanford.
Blackerby, Rodriguez, Horn, and Sanford. Okay, very good. Any other nominations?
Yes, Peters, Rodriguez, Horn, and Sanford.
I'm, I'm sorry, Peters?
Peters, Rodriguez, Horn, and Sanford.
Okay.
Green.
Green.
Okay. So everyone's nominated, all of the candidates, so choose four, and we'll take the roll call whenever the clerk is ready. Mayor Pretam Rouse?
Green, Blackerby, Rodriguez, Horn.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Green, Rodriguez, Horn, Sanford.
Councilmember Dominguez?
Green, Peters, Sanford, Rodriguez.
Councilmember Friedman?
Blackerby, Rodriguez, Horn, Sanford.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Blackerby, Rodriguez, Horn, Sanford.
Councilmember Hart?
Blackerby, Rodriguez, Horn, and Sanford.
Councilmember Hart? I'm sorry, we just did that. Mayor Maria?
Blackerby, Rodriguez, Horn, Sanford.
Okay, we have from the highest Kathleen Rodriguez at seven votes. At six votes, we have Susan Horn and Eve Sanford. At five, we have Hillary Blackerby. So those would be the four appointed. Mr. Green has three votes, and Mr. Peters has one.
Very good. So that closes this item with much thanks to the applicants and to our city council for working through that diligently. Close that item, we'll move on to committee assignment reports. We have quite a few closed session items related to litigation, but Councilmember Sneddon, go ahead first. What have you been up to?
Thank you. I, with many of you, participated in the holiday parade, also the monosito tree lighting. There was a main tree, but also one palm tree lit for each life lost in the monosito debris flow. So when you drive along Coast Village Road and see those palm trees lit, it's a nice remembrance. Participated in the parade of lights, sustainability committee, got our energy supply planning, looking at that still before it comes to council, sea level rise committee. Today, we heard more about vulnerabilities for our decel plant and our wastewater infrastructure. There was also a public outreach meeting, which was really excellent meeting, well attended. Melissa Ettrick did a great job leading that, that meeting, and it was a great meeting. COME and CCRB both had meetings this week. It was Doug Morgan's final meetings. He's, he's been on those commissions a very long time, yeah. And also a tour with Councilmember Friedman, the Cater Water Treatment Plant. It was great to see that facilities also.
Great. Mr. Friedman?
Attended, also attended the this morning Sea Level Rise Subcommittee and the community meeting last Wednesday, the parade of lights, the downtown holiday parade, and the tour of the Cater Treatment Plant, which was great for today's item, so I had a better understanding of it.
Mr. Rouse?
The sustainability committee met yesterday and had a presentation by staff about our, our, our progress towards our goals of 100% sustainability. progress towards our goals of 100% sustainability, it's going pretty well, they'll be back with a report soon.
Mr. Gutierrez.
I also attended the Downtown Holiday Parade, the Parade of Lights, the Fire and Police Commission Meeting, and also a Leon Meeting, thank you.
I, last night I attended the Fratelli Men's Chorus Holiday Concert, and it's gay men and their allies, and they engaged high school students, and it was a really beautiful performance, the Parade of Lights was very nice, some of you didn't mention that, we were out there, congratulations to our waterfront department, it's very popular with our residents. I went to Mrs. Orne's second grade class at Crane Country Day School, I recommend talking to second graders, everybody, it's really nice. News Hawk had a reimagining downtown conversation, some of you I think were there, I attended the Home for Good meeting last week, and we think there are more monies coming from the state related to homeless programming, perhaps housing, the Downtown Holiday Parade was very nice, New Beginnings invited me to a luncheon regarding their services for homeless war veterans, they're doing really good work in that field, and I attended the Santa Barbara City College Board of Trustees meeting last week, they're very concerned about safety on Cliff Drive, especially in front of their main entrance, and there was a terrible tragedy there. And so we will be going to close session, I do need to...
Can I chime in here?
Oh, Mr. Dominguez, go ahead, please.
Thank you, I didn't attend any meetings actually in the city limits, obviously I'm overseas doing a law school course with several other faculty members from different institutions around the US, but I did do some things that I think are very important for the City of Santa Barbara, I also went to a school, a school called the Leap School, and it's a special funded school where they have programming for students to, they call it life orientation or LO, and they develop skills to enable them to communicate with other students, with families, with institutions, and these are eighth grade to 11th grade students, I attended a session by Dr. Winner, who's a known water expert here in the West Cape of South Africa, and tomorrow I'll be going on a special worksite visit where they're trying to revive a former wastewater plant and use it to restore rivers, and it's called the French Hook Wastewater Treatment Works, and South Africa, this part of South Africa, the West Cape, was approaching at day zero earlier this year where the water was going to be shut off, their drought was that bad, and they had a miracle rain similar to what the City of Santa Barbara experienced in the 90s, which really saved some serious destruction and devastation, and so we've had some lectures from experts here on how they've gone about increasing their planning capacity and what they're going to do moving forward, and then I met with Dr. Montfella Ramphale, who was a former director of the World Bank and political activist, and she now works in the nonprofit world, helping people cooperate and get together and move forward the community, she's working on reimagining South Africa post-apartheid, so it's been a very exciting time to be here.
Thank you for an update on your activities, Mr. Dominguez, we have some closed session items, Madam Clerk.
Closed session, item 30, subject conference with city attorney, existing litigation as described in Agenda Item 30. Item 31, subject conference with city attorney, existing litigation as described in Agenda Item 31. Item 32, conference with city attorney, existing litigation as described in Agenda Item 32. Item 33, conference with city attorney, anticipated litigation as discussed in Agenda Item 33, and finally, item 34, conference with city attorney, existing litigation as described in Agenda Item 34.
Thank you, I'd like to adjourn the meeting in memory of Ike Jenkins, a musician and music teacher at Lacumbra Junior High School, and Leo Valenzuela, a war veteran, Tumasha activist, and labor leader who passed away, so condolences to their families, and we will adjourn from closed session, thank you.